Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 26, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Could we first please stand for the board?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Senator flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Susan certainly led us up with correspondence this week. There's none.
I'll send you something.
We.
I don't know what to do there. The section's empty.
Sorry about that.
Next, we'll move on to the meeting minutes of February 12, 2024. Any comments, corrections, additions?
Move to accept.
Is there a motion? Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Move us into the regular portion of the meeting. First, we have the BJ's Wholesale Club. We have in front of us a resolution renewing special use permit for a propane filling station facility as a permanent outdoor service at the BJ's Wholesale Club. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have the IBM Storage, Battery Storage. This is a decision statement. We have a resolution in front of us approving a special use permit for a tier-two battery energy storage system at the IBM TJ Watson Research Center. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into the regular or the work session portion of the meeting. First, we have the Gajaj Major Subdivision. This is a discussion.
You don't mind.
Take care. That is Joe Rena. How are you?
Good. Hello, everybody. I'm here with Steve Marino tonight.
Evening.
The last few months, we, Steve has been working to resolve some of the comments that were brought up by B and L. And he submitted his final response to that, which I believe you all have. Where we left off last was, prior to that, was we had a PIH. And once we're clear of any question that you may have, or when you think we're ready, we'd like to go to a public hearing, a formal public hearing for the project. So I'll just let Steve summarize how he responded to B and L.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Steve Marino, Ten Miller Associates. We did, in the middle of January, receive the comments from Barton and La Judas. So we submitted a response at the end of January. Their comments related to the wetland delineation. They just wanted to make sure that the delineation shown on the plans is square with what their comments originally had been. So we've adjusted the wetland delineation to show the same line. We provided a wetland mitigation proposal, summary and proposal, just to document what it is we're proposing to do with the mitigation, why we think it's appropriate, how it's going to work, monitoring and maintenance schedule, et cetera. We answered a question about the conservation parcel, which, you know, we're open to discussing with the board how establishment of that conservation parcel would be done, as a conservation easement as a separate parcel. There's a number of options there, and we can discuss that as we move forward. But it would be a separate, non-building parcel. They had commented the wetland mitigation plan as proposed seems reasonable, so we're just confirming that. We'll go to the Army Corps of Engineers. Once we've finalized the layout, generally, we don't go to the Corps until we know exactly what the impacts are going to be, based on discussions with the planning board. So we're not chasing a moving target with dealing with the Corps. And the last item was related to the trees. They've reviewed our tree summary, trees that need to come down, et cetera, and came up with a number based on the town's code as to what the tree fee would be as a result of this project. And we've confirmed that our applicant is okay with that number as we move forward for the tree mitigation. And that's it.
Steve, did you see the Conservation Board's last memo?
Conservation Board, yes. Joe and I appeared before the Conservation Board a couple of weeks ago. Their one concern or comment, really, was related to hydrology to the wetland
Yeah.
mitigation area. And we're exploring the possibility, there is a town detention basin adjacent, right adjacent to where our mitigation area is. So we're exploring the possibility of taking the water as it flows out of that and directing it into our mitigation area for additional hydrology.
Is that going to be reflected in any of the filed plans, or you're not there yet?
That will be reflected on our next series of plans. Hopefully, you know, for the public hearing, we'll have that planned.
Yeah, because that goes to the question of the public hearing preparation.
We would have that done, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any comments, concerns?
No.
John?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
So should we set a public hearing?
I don't see why not.
Sure.
Ian, Rob, what we got?
Looking at July.
November's looking good.
Yeah.
I'll have to look it up because I have the date deadlines on my desk.
Okay. All right, so work with Rob and we'll get a.
Very good.
A hearing set, okay?
Great, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night. Okay, next, we have a ZB A referral, 02-24 Confident Kids Club. It's a special use permit application.
Good evening. My name is Joel Greenberg. I'm the architect. This is Chris Barlow, the owner, and Brendan Barlow, also the owner. And we have read the comments from the planning board, and we've completely changed the way we're going to have the kids dropped off and picked up. Basically, the problem was that the school district buses will not, a repeat, will not enter onto private property. So we had to eliminate that completely. And basically, the tagline on your comments were that the best thing would be, which is the drawing that you have there now, which basically, we're going to buy our own minibus, and they'll be entering from Route 202 and drive around, leave the kids right off at the entrance to the facility, and then drive out. The same thing with the parents, when they drop them off early in the morning, there'll be some three designated spots, which will be for the parents to drop, to park, and then take their kids into the facility. The long and short of it is that the kids will not be walking around on the site at all. They'll be guided with either the staff or their parents, and the buses will drive them right up to the front door, so, which is exactly what this board recommended.
I think that's a very positive move, you know, to work on the safety issue that we raised. I do have a question about the back of the building and the outdoor recreation. There's nothing shown on your drawing as to what else is going on back there. So I think you're going to use that spot in the corner up against Old Crampon Road for recreation. But what else is going on in that back parking lot?
Basically, the, most of the employees for the stores that are there right now park in the back. And on the left-hand side, there is an area for refuse pickup.
I think you should show those.
Oh, yeah, I'll add that on.
Features on your plan so that they can be assessed in terms of the safe movement of the kids back and forth back there.
Okay. No problem.
In the same vein, you have an area back there where these businesses that are in that complex are getting deliveries. So there's going to be truck movement. I'd like to see a designated striped-off walkway if that's what's going to happen back there.
Okay.
And looking at another one of the plans, I see the three spots that you have designated for parents are the only two handicap spots in the parking lot.
Correct. And they will be relocated adjacent to the parent pickup. But to answer your question with regard to the access to the recreation area, at the present time, there are no plans to use the recreation area. It'll be there, but I think I like the idea of at least showing, if we use it, how to get there safely. And that'll be shown on the revised site plan.
And are you done?
I do have one more question.
Go ahead, because I have one, too.
The, and I like the idea of. The only issue I see with that, and it really has to do with time flow, because the bagel shop is really busy in the morning. And if you notice cars coming off 202, they're waiting in that turn lane to get into this lot. If you have a bus in there that's cutting off half the parking lot, there's a, I see a possibility, it may be a slim possibility, but I see a possibility of cars backing up out to 202 because they can't get around a bus with flashing lights.
Well, okay, we've actually addressed that amongst ourselves. And we've checked the times when the bagel store opens and when the bagel store closes. First of all, they close at four o'clock, so the afternoon situation is not a problem at all. And, yeah, and the parents will be dropping their kids off probably just before the bagel store opens. So I don't think that it's going to be, I mean, there may be a time or two where it might happen. But obviously, since this is a minibus, when the bus stops in front of the entrance, we're talking maybe two or three or four minutes is the most that, when the staff will be out there to walk the kids in. They're just walking on the sidewalk directly into the entrance. So I don't think that's going to be a problem. And as I said, if there is a situation where the bagel store is getting crowded, the bus will not be stopped more than, I would say, maybe three or four minutes. Is that correct?
Yeah, or the bus could maybe just pull a little forward, and the kids go onto the sidewalk and over, and, you know, like even to the, into those spots on the left side.
Yeah, as long as it's a school bus carrying kids, they've got flashes.
Oh, yeah, that's correct. But as I said, since this is a minibus, there won't be more than, what, about seven or eight kids per bus?
We don't know, but we'd like more, obviously. We want the program to be successful.
That's it for me.
The other question, I'm going back to the rear yard where the play area is. Whenever you have moving vehicles adjacent to a play area, I think we have in the past required substantial barriers be placed around the play area to protect it.
Oh, the whole area will be fenced in.
But, well, it's not just fencing.
Boltons or what are they called?
We're calling bollards.
Bollards, yeah, yeah.
And I also am concerned about the proximity to Old Crampon Road. I don't know what the distance is. I don't know what's paved. I don't know what the elevation, you know, the grading is over there in terms of, is it below grade, above grade, level with it?
At that particular point, at the back of the parking lot, onto Old Crampon Road is virtually level. There's no grade up or down.
So I would like to see that on the drawing as well, what's going on back there. And again, measures that you're taking to safeguard that area from any traffic in the parking lot or off to.
I believe there's a chain link fence.
Correct.
Chain link and a hump with trees.
Okay.
You're not getting through there.
What time does the bagel store open?
I believe it's at seven.
Six or six-thirty?
No, I thought it was around seven.
Seven?
I think it's around seven.
You sure?
No.
All right, so I'm going to be honest with you.
I'm honest with you.
I always used to say it, devil's in the details. These plans lack a lot of details.
Yeah.
All right? They're almost sketches on existing drawings to some point.
No, no, we understand that, but we wanted to get.
I'm going to be honest with you, and I think we have, some of us have some concerns about this, because obviously, and you guys know better than anybody, nothing more important than the care of children. Right? You're not showing us what we need to see on here.
Again, we wanted to make sure that the concept was good.
I don't know that the concept is good because you're not showing us what we need to see on here.
Fine, we will show it.
All right?
No problem.
And I think it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to do a site visit with this one, with the ZB A. I think so, too.
Yeah, we can do that.
A joint site visit.
What concerns me is there's absolutely nothing in the back, other than your proposed outdoor recreation area. So the curbing stops in the front, and we're to believe if this drawing represents what's there now, there's nothing back there. And I know that there's paving and there's other things that are back there.
There's curves and.
And so we need to see, what's the existing site plan that's approved for this site?
Yeah.
So that's what we need to see. I mean, yeah, we may need to look at our town records to see what the approved site plan is. But at the very least, it should, your plan should demonstrate what's there now and what you propose to revise. Based on the absence of that, but on your comments, you're saying that trucks go back there, there's a dumpster, so they pick up refuse and so forth. And then you're telling us that children are going to walk from the back of that building over to the proposed recreation area.
I didn't say.
Makes me very uncomfortable.
I understand that and I appreciate that, but right now, there are absolutely no plans. The code requires us to show a recreation area, which we're doing. But based on the program that they're doing, there is really not going to be a situation where we're going to use that recreation area. It's there as required by the code.
So you're saying you're showing something that will never be built?
Correct. Correct. It's, we show it because the code requires it.
Yeah, I think that's a legal question. I don't know the answer to that, but.
Well, the, I'm sorry. We asked them to show it. I think they showed it initially because they read the code, but we wanted to know whether or not it was possible, given the discussion that would surround whether or not there needs to be and should be a recreation area. So that's why it's on the plan in the first instance.
I don't know. If you're going to show it, and you can show it in the middle of the parking lot, we'll meet the requirement of showing it. But that doesn't mean that it's any way, shape, or form acceptable to me, at least.
Safe, yeah.
So I think we just need definition on why are we showing it if we're showing it at all? And if it's going to be in an unacceptable place, but it meets the requirement of showing it, I don't know what the requirement is good for.
Yeah.
So I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just saying, I hear what you're saying. You were required to show it, so you showed it. But I'm required to look at it, and I don't like what I see.
I think we were asked to show it. I don't know if there's a requirement to show it.
I posed the question.
Right.
Originally, that I asked, was there going to be a play area? I didn't know that there was anything further than that.
But isn't, according to the code, doesn't it say, like, you don't, in a commercial setting, you do not need an outdoor play area?
I don't know that it says that.
It says something like that, of that? I'm not sure on the detail.
There's no minimum.
Minimum size, okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think this board should at least make a site visit, but I think your plan should demonstrate what is back there now. If we're to judge that, we need to see what's there.
Okay.
So in the absence of seeing anything, I'm not willing to look favorably on a plan that shows nothing, just an outline of the property. That's literally what's shown here.
Yeah.
I don't see any topo. I don't see anything. And I know there's stuff back there. So I think we need to be more detailed about that. The other thing is, I'd like some representation as to what the parking is in terms of leases. In other words, there are other tenants in this building.
Correct.
Do they have assigned parking spaces or a minimum that's in their lease, as a minimum in your lease? In other words, what is the parking that's there, and what is the distribution of the parking? Because I know most leases, I've been familiar with commercial leasing, that they'll say you have 15 spaces, let's say. And if the need arises, they'll number them for you or put signs up designating them as your spaces. So there's got to be some language about what that parking ratio is.
I mean, we don't have the other leases and.
No, I mean, the landlord would have to demonstrate that to you.
Is there an approved site plan for this?
We'll find out, as if you've been to the site, there are no designated parking spaces for the bagel shop, the pizza shop.
No, no, I understand that. But what I'm saying is usually in a commercial space, they will tell you, you've got 15 spaces, or I'm just using a number to illustrate the example. Let's say you have 15 spaces. They tell you, you're good for 15 spaces.
Yeah.
And usually, there's language that says if the need arises, in other words, if the bagel store suddenly gets busy and he's using your spaces, they'll demonstrate that putting a sign up for your spaces, they're reserved for your use. I'm wondering, the landlord has to look at his consumption of space versus his parking demands and say, I've got enough spaces to have you as a tenant.
So let's take the other, let's say that there is nothing in the various leases.
Okay.
And obviously, and I actually happened to have the approved site plan.
Okay.
Originally, so I will make copies of that for the board. And it specifically shows all the parking spaces. It shows everything. And I think what it will do is I'll use this as a basis so that you can see exactly what's going on.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay?
That'll help.
That would help. I just, I would hate to see you be in a situation where you have a demand for parking. They've told you it's going to be okay, and then they can't make that happen. Or, and then we have approved the site plan for that.
Well, okay, let me just also say that the previous tenant in this particular space was a gym. And obviously, you're talking about a lot of people in a gym versus here where there's basically just the staff, which is probably very minimal, number one. And number two, obviously, the bus is going to leave the kids off. They don't need parking spaces. The parents will have those three spaces to take their children into the facility. And again, that parking will be free again, most of the day.
Right.
So we will find out. I'm, I mean, has the landlord given you any specific?
Regarding spots?
No. No, so I.
I'm not concerned about your use. I'm concerned about, you're not getting the space that you need. That's what I'm saying.
What I'm trying to bring out is that his lease does not have a specific number of spaces.
Right.
So I will find out for sure, but I'd have to guess that there is nothing, all the other, I think there's four other leases. I don't think that they will have anything which would go up to the number of parking spaces.
The nature of the business requires very minimal parking spots because parents don't stay.
No, no, I'm not at all questioning your need for parking. I'm questioning the overall parking on the site and the other demands from the other tenants.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, there's not a lot of.
That's what I'm concerned about.
No, I understand, but there's, especially because a lot of the other businesses are one or two people that would come in at a time, if that, you know, the nail salon, a takeout Chinese restaurant.
Takeout pizza.
And then a takeout pizza with a couple of chairs and tables. And then the bagel store is really the big draw. I would call that the anchor of the plaza.
Right. But I mean, we had just, I think there was a mention of having your bus pull up into that first space in the front there and unload children from there.
No, no, no. The bus will stop in front of the.
Okay, but I mean, somebody suggested that might be a nice solution, and it may be. But if that space is being occupied by somebody who's taking out pizza or something, you've got a problem. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Understood.
Has anybody calculated as per the code, the number of spots required for this use and the others in the building?
We haven't done that yet, no.
Okay. So I think that needs to be done.
How do you do that?
You go, you look at the code. The code requires certain things.
Well, I'll look through the original site plan that was approved and sort of the parking.
I have one more question just about the site. Is there vehicular access between this rear portion of the site and Old Crampon Road?
No, absolutely not.
Was there a gate or anything in that fence?
If you look at the original site plan, you're absolutely, 100% correct. There was a gate shown for access from Old Crampon Road into the site.
Does that gate still?
However, that, there's no gate now there now, because when we went back there, the fence just goes right straight across.
Yeah, there was never a gate. It was set that way, but it was never there.
Correct. I believe, and again, this goes back to the 1970s, but I believe that the residents of that area, the homes, did not want commercial traffic going back and forth on Old Crampon Road. So although the site plan, which was signed by the chairman, shows it, I don't believe it was, and certainly not used recently.
Just so the board knows, there's no entrance to the back of these buildings from Old Crampon. But there is businesses that are on Crampon that do have gates on this back going to Old Crampon. They are not used. The one is for the car dealership. And that was my, I believe it was meant for the fire departments if they had to get to the back of the building, since there's so many cars in the lot. And I believe McDonald's just installed one for their renovation, but that again is not being used, just there. McDonald's, when they originally went in, asked for a gate, and they were turned down.
It's unrelated, but didn't we talk about access to behind the windmill property?
Yeah.
There was going to be access off Old Crampon.
Parking lot.
For, okay. When are you going back to the zoning board, next month?
Yes, the fourth Thursday, I think it's the 28th of.
Okay.
And I believe you have another meeting before that? Okay. So.
All right, so we'll get something set up to visit out there before then.
Yeah, we'll get stuff, and we'll, obviously, now that we have the additional comments that you've made, so we'll address all that. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
I didn't even realize we spoke about that with the windmill.
Rich, I'll stop out there on my own and.
Yeah, I'm going to go out in the morning, too.
Communicate to John, since I'm going to be away for the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm leaving Thursday, so I won't be around for a Saturday site visit if you're.
Okay.
Try to hit it early. So I'm curious about the bagel place.
Yeah.
All right, next on the agenda, we have the town board referral for the large-scale energy systems moratorium. Sergio's going to get up to the podium.
Again?
Is that a public hearing yet?
No, we haven't. And we're, like I said, we're just, we're just waiting for comments. And the idea is to kind of pump the brakes and collect some of the data that we've learned from the current solar farms that we have approved and that we have in town and see if we can't come up with a better, a better plan.
So we have a draft in our book?
We have received several comments from other agencies that were favorable toward what we are planning to do. You know, just to take a look at the law is really what we're planning to do. Haven't made any decisions. There hasn't been any, anything formal.
So if something comes up from this board as it's proceeding, we could make comments as we're going to?
Well, your comments are always appreciated, so.
I agree we should make comments on the substance, and I think there is some that we could add to this memo that we have in front of us. Unless you want to just keep it to the moratorium question.
Well, if there, when there are modifications to the law, that will be referred to you as well.
Yeah, the question right now with the referral to you guys is about the moratorium.
My opinion, we should agree to a moratorium. And that would give us time to look at the new proposed amendments to the law. At least we'll be able to analyze it without pressure. Because somebody's going to want to come in and do a job, and then we're going to say, no, there's a moratorium. We have to study it.
We've had a few that have been problematic.
That's true. That's true.
And I guess we really have to review the problems that have come up with the ones that have already, so they'll weigh heavy on what's going to actually go on.
But does that require a moratorium? I mean, can't prudent thought be an ongoing process? We're talking about a moratorium that would go to September of 2024, right? That's what's suggested right now?
I think the moratorium would take the pressure off buses. And we could go at it with an open book, you know, an open thought.
Honestly, I think the moratorium is necessary. So this way, we can, you know, take a good, hard look and make sure that whatever else comes down the pike, it'll fall under, you know, our new guidelines. If there are going to be new guidelines, I'm not, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves here. But the idea is that, you know, we want to take a good, hard look, and we want to get everybody's comments.
Well, I could tell you one thing.
Based on the data that we have.
Nobody's going to pull out because there's a moratorium. They're going to ride with the moratorium, and when it's over, they're going to hit us with it. And look at the mistakes we approved. I think the Hill. I think the Hill Street is, is, is the worst thing we ever proved. You can see that from all over, and when they put the balloons up, they said, oh, the balloon over there, and everybody says, oh, it's so far away. When they started building a place, they're right on the road, any place you go in, around that area, you can see that eye, eyesaw. Visual pollution, so if we put a moratorium down now, we will be able to analyze the whole situation, take into consideration the mistakes we made on the elements. And we did make mistakes, as far as I'm concerned.
There's a very important issue in the memo that's before us in response to the moratorium law, and that's whether it should extend to all projects which are not already basically online. In other words, the current moratorium law appears to prevent the issuance of COs and building permits. And the memo points out that that would essentially stop already approved projects. Is that something that?
How do you do that?
Well, I, I would be concerned if there are any grants or funding or incentives that might terminate prior to the end of the moratorium, that might impact any of these applicants. They may be, there may be incentives or other funding type of things that if we put a moratorium in, basically a stop work on everything that's in place, that could be a very negative impact.
Do we have a number of approved projects that are?
We have the list.
In your materials, there's a.
It's attached to this, is a list.
A list.
I think there's only two projects that we're currently reviewing, one is Jacob Road and the other one is Dell.
Yeah, and Jacob Road is just basically, we just walked through it, so.
Right, but, but I think the moratorium allows us to continue to review it, and the suggestion is that we get a, an approval from the applicant, an understanding that there is a moratorium about to happen, and so they would have to consent to moving forward, given the understanding a moratorium is about to go in place.
True.
Which I'm okay with.
I'm okay with that.
So I think that'll give them notice so that they can choose to continue forward or not, but, but to, to cause an approved project to not have the authority to pull a building permit or get a certificate of occupancy in the middle of their process, I don't think is necessarily a fair, fair thing.
If I'm reading this correctly, the IBM solar canopies.
Right.
Would not be able to go online.
Exactly.
Correct, correct. And there's a whole list of those, and this memo supports that position, that those should go forward.
And that would go back to Arcady.
Yes.
Our position.
Our, our proposed memo is suggesting that we allow those to go forward if they've been approved by us.
Oh, that's okay, that's fine.
Which, which we will take into consideration, but you know, given, when we speak about negative impacts, you know, we want to make sure that there are no negative impacts to the town of Yorktown either. And, and I think that's really why we're, we're moving forward with this, or we would like to move forward with this, to make sure that there are no negative impacts to, to our, our own citizens and our own town, which I've, which I hold more dear.
True.
The, the only issue that comes to mind with the moratorium that we're talking about, if we go back to, I'm looking at Arcady Farms on Baptist Church Road, we looked at that a while ago. We've all decided that that project is in the woods, it is not visible by anybody. By all of its own merits, I believe it should be, go online as is, but this moratorium would stop it.
Yes, that's why, the purpose of our memo is to bring that point out and to suggest to the town board that they take that piece of the law out of the moratorium. So I'm, I, I would support that.
I support that unless, I mean, I hear what, what Sergio is saying also, I think that if they can, they demonstrate to themselves that there is a need to select one project for a particular reason or something, then, then they could choose to do that. But in general, I think, a project that has gone through our review and, and have been granted approval and is now in the, in the various stages of, of getting under construction, or maybe under construction, or like IBM, IBM is way down the road. I think that that's problematic because they've been led to believe that, you know, they're almost there and now they're ready to turn the lights on and.
I think I have a little bit of a question on, we're the approving party. We've given the approval to everything, and yet we're passing this to the town board to make a decision.
Yeah, and, but I think maybe, maybe the line needs to be drawn if they haven't pulled a building permit yet. They should be precluded from pulling a building permit, but if they've already pulled a permit and they're under construction and they've got their financing in place, that's a different story.
Yeah, I, I believe in the moratorium, I, I believe it's a necessary.
I do too, I, I do.
Necessary fact.
I just think the definition of.
I'd like to be part of the review process.
I, I just think the, the, the line of where you stop somebody from going forward is critical.
Yes.
And.
Which, which, which we have not yet made any decisions on.
Right, no, I understand.
Well, Sergio, that's why we're having this discussion.
But we should put that.
Where we put our.
Yeah, strongly.
I think it should be in our memo to, to define where.
Yeah.
Where we agree and where we think that.
Well, it is, number one is, is just this, that we're talking about in terms of the building permit and the COs.
Right.
Okay. Point number two is a little different. Does this current moratorium proposal prevent us from taking any action?
I don't think it allows you to review.
Okay.
It certainly needs some clarity, and past moratoriums, in particular, building moratorium that we had during the comprehensive plan, allowed review at your own risk, to which you signed an, an acknowledgement that you're proceeding at your own risk and something may change upon you at the conclusion of the moratorium. And that's a choice.
So that's not in the current proposal?
No.
Okay, what do you think about that?
I will tell you that a discussion that I did have with, with the town attorney was regarding building permits and if they were already issued. So it is, it is something that the, the town board is aware of and has, you know, is going to be looking at it, but we're just waiting for the referrals to get back.
David, do you have any thoughts?
I share the concern about exposing the town to litigation if someone's ready to move forward on their, on their project. I think that, you know, as the, as the town board considers a moratorium, they should take that into account. I, I like John's proposal, having some language in there that basically says, look, you can, you know, you can sign this acknowledgement, you, you understand, you know, what, what might be coming down the pipeline, and, and you're okay with that, just from a risk mitigation standpoint, I think that's the best option.
It's a great suggestion.
So we should put that in too?
Yeah.
I have no problem with it, I mean, I think it's, you know, it's almost, why are we doing this at all? It's a moving target, you know?
That's right.
We're spending time and effort and people are drawing plans and spending money on presentations and so forth, and experts that come in. I guess they could do it at their own risk, doesn't hurt us.
We're just putting them on notice what the circumstances are in case they miss that.
Yeah.
This is the way we're moving forward, otherwise we will not move forward.
True.
So.
All right, so that's good too.
I, I think one of the, one of the things that's come up that was the most substantial issue I think we were dealing with was on Dell Avenue, the adjacent residential property.
Right.
Which happens to be in another town. So it kind of brings me back to what we looked at over on Route Six. We've got the reverse of that happening, we're now on the other side of the line supposedly.
Well, we also got it on Jacob Road.
Right, exactly, but I mean, it hasn't been brought up from, from the owner, from the adjacent property owner, but it did on Dell. And I think we need some legal definition as to what we're obligated to do or not do on that. And, and that may affect us in other, other locations in the future.
Sure.
So that definition is probably something would be helpful if that can get included in the town's consideration of revising the law. How far do we have to go, not go? Because I think one of the things that always has come back to me in, in understanding this law the way it is, is that, that particular property was approved for, I forget how many residential units.
Which one?
Dell. Dell.
Yeah.
And my point was, is that if those units got built and everybody put solar panels on their roof, you'd have the equivalent of what we're talking about without having to deal with the solar law because everybody put them on their own houses. And I'm, there's, there's got to be, there's got to be a recognition of the hypocrisy of that, those two things clashing. And I think it, it demonstrates to us, I think, what we're dealing with in terms of that confusion. In other words, if those homes were there and everybody had a solar panel on their roof, would the neighbors still have the right to complain?
Well, based on the law as it's written, they could argue that point.
Yeah, I, so I just think that.
Again, I think that's the delineation between a large scale versus a residential.
No, I understand, but if every.
I understand you're talking about square footage.
Yeah, if everybody put their panels up, it could be, it could be close to the same thing, and as, as Rich always says, the details aren't the details. I agree completely, the details could end up, you'd have the same result, but being looked at differently because one is sitting on a house and one's sitting on the ground, and you got the same result. There's got, and, and we're left to decide that. And, and I don't know the answer to it, I just think that there, there's confusion by looking at those two things. And that particular property painted the example for us because it had already been approved for residential use, so.
Obviously, the biggest issue we're facing is screening.
Yeah, exactly.
That, that's the issue, adjacent to residential properties, visual pollution, however you want to call it.
Right.
Screening is the issue. Now, again, I don't know what some of the renderings five years out on the Hill Boulevard look like, right? Whether there's mature growth and they will be screened, we don't know yet, but obviously right now it looks as it looks. But I think the challenge is that the law still refers to something called fully screened.
Right. What does that mean?
That's been our challenge, and so that, that requires some.
I, I think the general public's reaction to the term fully screened doesn't mean you can't see it.
Some will say it does.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, we ran into that.
Yeah.
Another substantive issue that I run into is, is the whole balancing act between clearing a mature wooded forest for putting these things up. And the other issue which I ran into at Jacob Road was the setback issue, okay? They push the panels out to the farthest edge of the property that they can, and then they say, well, there's some trees here that are going to cast shadows, so we'll take the trees down. But that, you know, we should be given the tools to adjust that kind of thing.
I think you guys are making a great case for the moratorium.
Balance this, well, now we're into the.
Why do you need a moratorium for that? What you're saying is, look, take, as we do, take every site plan and every project on its own merits and its own challenges. And if somebody says, I want to cut down forty more trees because they cast shadows, we can say no. But we didn't.
Or put up a fence.
But.
I still think we need a moratorium.
But, but we, we don't, we don't have, if they say we're going to cut down these trees and they're going to pay the money into the tree fund, and they come up with all the mathematics to show how the carbon offset balance, we have to deal with that, we have to accept that. We don't have the tools to say, you know, as a policy decision, the town has decided to go in a different direction. And I'm, I'm just talking about substantive issues for the board to think about as they go forward, not so much the moratorium itself, but once they're there and they're taking, as Will says, the breathing time, the thinking time, these are things they need to think about.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's a whole lot.
And there's another thing we should consider, somebody just said about the equity, about the applicant, his grants and stuff. If you really look at it, the applicant comes with a minimum, a minimum of equity in the, in the job. The rest is all grants from the taxpayers and, and, and federal and state grants. So what happens is, in my estimation, the, the local taxpayer pays through the nose, he pays a dollar for his taxes to build a place, and he gets three cents back on his, on his electric bill. Where's the justice for that? I don't see any. So I don't think we should consider the, the applicant's equity at all. We consider the law and that's it.
What else? That's it. So we put a moratorium in place, then what?
It gives them time to revise.
Then we come up with stuff.
The process is the revision of the law.
We need to commit to that, to spend the time and the energy to do that, not just let Kyle run out.
Right.
It's a whole lot of work in that.
Yeah, one of the arguments on the other side is going to be that, like Willie just explained, a lot of this money will dry up before we come to a conclusion at the end of, and decide on the moratorium being worded properly and dealing the issue, dealing with the issues that we have. State money runs out eventually, funding projects from the federal government can dry up overnight. The argument coming from the other side, whether we want to hear it or not, is going to be, well, if I don't get this project in, in time, I can't do it.
Yeah, well, that's not our problem.
No, it's not, but this is the argument from the other side. You, you, you got to remember, we're good neighbors.
Yeah, but whether that argument.
We don't want to hurt our neighbors.
Whether that argument is valid or not, it still doesn't tell us that we should do a moratorium or we should not do a moratorium.
I agree with the moratorium.
I agree with the moratorium.
I agree, if I had a vote hands down right now, I'd put it in place. All we really need to know is the questions that we're looking for this moratorium to give us guidance on.
I think that'll come out as.
We're working on it.
It'll be in the process.
That'll be.
We're working on that.
Yes.
So we're being it to death.
Yeah, all right, so we will, it sounds like we're going with the, the, yeah, with support and we'll revise the memo as, as discussed and.
Revised to what?
You want to add anything to it?
Well, do we?
I think, I think the one definition we had was if somebody had a building permit.
Yeah.
That's in the memo.
Right.
But do we have to make it stronger?
No, no, that's, yeah, I agree, it's in the memo, so I think, I think the memo says what we wanted to say.
Right, do we want to add anything of substantive issues at this point?
We don't, we don't need to change that, we were, we were talking about something that was already there, we were agreeing to it, so.
Yes, right. But do we want to add any substantive concerns or, or kind of wait on that as we?
Wait until.
Wait on getting discussions.
I think wait for the process.
Yeah, we'll.
Okay.
So. So you do not recommend including the issuance of building permits or CFOs if there's an approved project? You think that should go forward? Once it's approved on this board, they should be able to move forward, that's what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Yep.
And you are saying that they should be permitted to review their applications, provided that there is a mechanism for them to acknowledge there's a moratorium and that they're proceeding at their own risk, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
And you also agree there should be an appeal provision in the moratorium?
Why would it, why would we need that appeal? If, if we say it shouldn't go forward, why would they be able to appeal that?
Well, usually, there's always an appeal.
Anything.
Mechanism in almost anything.
Would they be appealing to us or to the town?
Let's, let's go back to the example I gave before, Arcady Farms.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
This project has no neighbors, visible by nobody, it's basically in the middle of the woods. If we turn them down, I think they should have the right to appeal it. And they could say, look, if you think my project is harming this in some way, show me where I am going wrong. That's all.
Or IBM comes in.
Or IBM.
The appeal.
You know, that project, some of these are no brainers. You wouldn't want, you know, if there was a, if there was no avenues, stuff like that would get stopped.
And, and just looking at, it's like the Dell Avenue project, looking at all the work that they put into that project, IBM. They came to us, they helped their neighbors, they did everything that we could ask them to do. So if we turn them down matter-of-factly, I think they should have the right to go to the appeal process.
There should always be some avenue of appeal.
This is an appeal only for the application of the moratorium.
That's right.
This is not an appeal of the merits of the project.
Project.
Right.
Okay.
All right, we could agree on some of that.
Are we in agreement?
In agreement.
Okay, and just last, lastly, the, the missive here on aspects of the actual law, you want to leave out for now or?
Only, I think that's got to be, I, I would suggest, because again, I'm not a hundred percent certain I'm in agreement that a moratorium is going to change anything. The work needs to be done, right? The review of the process, the review and the lessons learned from the projects that we've already proved. I, I'm not quite sure what, it may, it may just be my misunderstanding or lack of understanding of what a moratorium means, right? So we're, my one concern would be that we have these projects that are currently underway, and we have this discussion about the law and some of the parts of the law that we have struggled with, really the key aspect screening, needs to be part of the ongoing. really the key aspect, screening, needs to be part of the ongoing discussion if there is to be a moratorium. So I think it should be included in the memo.
Leave it in.
My, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Everybody else?
Can't argue.
And then is there a number two at the bottom of the memo? Or is it number two?
It's empty.
Oh, okay.
So now you don't wanna put any, you don't wanna put any of that in right now? Is that what you're saying?
What's that?
You don't wanna put any substantive concerns in right now?
No, he said to leave number one.
Leave the note, leave, leave the first one about the law and screening and our, you know, the challenges that that.
What about some of the other stuff that we talked about, the trees and the?
I think that's, that's what we should be discussing during this moratorium, if that's the.
Well, do you wanna raise any of those issues at the outset, that's all.
That's all, put them in there, can't hurt.
Yeah, and I think it would come up as a matter of process.
These are issues we wrestled, yeah, okay.
Good.
Doesn't hurt.
Can't hurt.
So you want a brief summary sentence about some of the issues that you think will be, you will be discussing when the law comes around?
Yes.
Okay. I'm clear now, thank you.
Good.
That's good.
All right, next on the agenda, we have a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Bye.
Five minutes off.
Goodnight, Yorktown.